Yes, as soon as everybody turns on their mics.
Turns on their mics. Let's see. There we go. There's that one.
I'll turn it down when I talk.
Don't.
Don't talk. Alright, so...
Let's be your neighbors.
Why don't I call us to order? We seem to have everybody here. We've got a full table of members. And Joe was around having some people sign something for reappointments. Good. So we seem to be doing that. Couple of things going on here. First of all, we get the zoning meeting of minutes from April 21st. They were in our package. We haven't done anything with these yet, have we? We haven't met, so let's either approve them or put in a motion to do a correction to them.
I have any corrections, I'll make a motion to accept them in minutes of April 21st.
We have a motion on the table to accept the meeting minutes. Do I get a second?
A second.
Seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Very good. Meeting minutes approved as written. Alright. On the agenda tonight, what we have is Mike and Andrea. And if I pronounce anything wrong, tell me here. I will apologize ahead of time, but I think that's Makowski, owners of Nine Lincolnshire. And I'm not gonna read the tax number. The applicant seek to install a new 192 square foot accessory structure. And by the way, this is a correction from where we were when we tried to hold our previous meeting. We've now made that correction. So that's why we're doing this one. The current zoning allows an accessory structure to be 1% of the total lot footage or 192 square feet maximum, whichever is less. The applicant's square footage allows for 130 square foot accessory structure to be built. The applicant therefore seeks 62 square foot area of the variance pursuant to the Village Code Section 175-59A, and it was amended in 2020 for Properties 1-2-13.6. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask you to tell us a little bit about it. There doesn't seem to be anyone here to... And if there was appropriate, folks were notified? Okay, then there's no one here to talk about it. So go ahead.
Yeah, just give... Do you want me at the podium?
Oh, you can do it anywhere you want to.
At the podium.
No. They like it at the podium.
So you've got a mic.
You like your mics.
And that's only so they got a mic or phone for you.
Good evening. We are looking to have a shed. We have a small garage and just, you know, with everything that we collect in life, we just want more storage space.
Can you tell me where you are on Lincolnshire? As I look down there, there's a circle and there's a short street.
Yeah, we're right in front of the circle.
You're right in front of the circle?
Yep.
Perfect.
Alright, and we're putting it in the northeast portion of the property in the package.
So when you're looking at the property, is that the left-hand corner?
Correct.
Oh, anything else?
Yes.
According to this drawing, it would be the northwest.
So is that northwest?
I'm sorry.
And I noticed there was a pile of rubble or something in that corner, right?
Oh, there on the map, did you Google map it?
No.
It was firewood. Yeah, there was firewood at one point and now there's gravel.
Oh, gravel, so you've got charcoal with the gravel?
Oh, that's where I'm storing the tractor.
Oh, okay. Alright, I just wondered what was going on back there.
Yep.
Give me a little hint.
Yes, sir.
Spent 30-plus years on hauling gravel. I did. What do you want almost double the size of the storage shed for?
Lawn tractors, snow blower, all the generator, you know, all the stuff that we collect that...
Well, you could've just said, "I put my car in the garage, man, there's no room."
Well, that's where...
I would like to put my car in the garage.
No piling on.
Please, please, give me a hand.
Did you review this with most of your neighbors?
All my neighbors. All my adjacent neighbors, yeah.
Any comments or any comments against this from any of the neighbors? Because they obviously haven't shown up here.
No one was opposed, and I got signatures from most of them. There were a couple that were out of town.
Okay, is there anyone who refused to sign it?
No.
I don't want to go over 200 square foot shed.
No, nobody, no, we opposed it.
Okay. How high is it gonna be?
I believe it's like nine and a half feet roughly. It's not more than 10 feet.
Anybody know the normal shed goes up about 10 feet? I don't know where it goes.
It really depends on the wall height and roof pitch.
Yep. Inside roof pitch, everything, it varies. And that's just a curiosity question, I'm just saying curiosity does. Yeah, no, they're all different, there's no real standard per se.
Some of them look like little barns, others have a peak in the roof.
Right.
I don't know what this one's...
This is, I would say the pitch approximately is a 1-2, you know, two feet out for every foot up. Approximately. We bought it from Sturdy Build on Route 250.
Okay, so they're gonna deliver it fully built or...
Yeah, correct.
So really, the only issue is you provided your site plan?
Yes, sir.
But you did not indicate how far off the property lines you intend to...
10 feet. 10 feet.
10 feet off each side and back lot.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, he's not looking for a setback, just area.
There we go.
And it just didn't see any dimensions.
I've gotten all my stuff, but I didn't include it because he's not looking for a setback, just area.
So according to this instrument survey that whoever drew this didn't draw up the scale?
No.
Okay, because it's a lot larger than that block that's drawn. So... So your current garage is 16 by 20, that's 320 square feet. And you're asking, and you don't even have to show up here to get 130 square feet. You wouldn't even have to show up here to get 130 square foot accessory building on your lot. So that was put in a couple of years ago because we used to have a very small square footage compared to other communities. But we changed it to 1% of your square footage. Which was similar to what other communities around here do for the square footage. But you're asking to go the maximum, 195.
192.
192. Okay. So that is almost, you know, that is a garage that could be, you know, 12 by 16 as you're saying. So from my point of view, my point of view, I don't think we're preserving what I keep considered the character of the community by putting in large accessory buildings like this.
I'm sorry you feel that way.
Yeah, and I think that what I'm concerned about is that once we give permission to one person to do that, it's very difficult to have other people say, "We can't do that also." And so it gets to the point of, at some point in time, why do we even have these zoning rules here? If the only reason you're doing this is to store stuff that you've purchased? Where you already have a garage where you could store stuff that you've purchased? And you could also get another accessory building that is 130 square foot?
Garages are usually meant for vehicles, sir. Correct?
Yeah, I can think about, if you want to...
If you look at the size of the garage, I believe it's a little difficult to get a tractor in there? Lawn tractor?
If it's occupied by a car.
Correct. And a snow blower? Yeah, a snow blower.
So what I think you're saying was...
And anything else accessory-wise in this?
So if you had your way, maybe we should change the whole code in the village because of people having snow blowers and tractor lawn mowers and stuff like that? Because the garages aren't big enough.
I'm just asking for a variance.
This is a large one.
This is a very large variance for the amount of property you have.
For the record, he could technically add onto his garage without anybody's approval, but he doesn't want to do that.
We were going to do, do you want me to speak a little?
Because he wanted to keep the side driveway and stuff open, which makes sense.
You mean going out the side there?
Yeah.
Going toward the backyard or something?
Because of the way his driveway and stuff is, you know, he doesn't want to add onto that either.
And when we first went and purchased this shed, we were told by the person granted that sold us it, that it was the size that we could have. We had a home visit, we were told we could have this size. We applied for the permit and a week later got a phone call saying it was too big, but it was already purchased and being made. So it's not that we sought to purposely get something bigger than what was allowed for the village. We were misled multiple times and now we have this shed that's been paid for and built that we've been told by different people was originally okay, now it's not okay. And like Aaron said, we also did want to put on addition with getting a whole nother garage, which we had originally intended to do, but with the cost of everything nowadays to put on a whole nother addition to the house, to have a two-car garage? Because I would be the one that wants to park in the garage and with my little Subaru, you can barely get out of the car because it touches the walls of the garage.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry that this person wasn't informed.
Yes, I didn't.
I don't know if we have anything to do about that unless we want to visit them and say, "But you shouldn't be doing this, people," or information.
I guess I just wanted to express to you, and we didn't go out there and say, "Get us the biggest." We went and got what we were told we could get. And then we found out after the fact, and after getting the permit, that it's too big.
No, I understand your intentions.
So we didn't just seek to do this.
At the bigger point, and I'll bring this up as just another point here to make. How many are greater than 1%? How many sheds?
We have more of these coming, more of these zoning things coming because people want more space. We're actually a little more restrictive than all the towns around us. So if it was up to me unwitting, to be honest with you, if you ask my opinion, I mean, because this...
And if I may, with respect to all parties concerned, I do recall sitting here, or actually, maybe I was sitting there, and our esteemed colleague, and the name escapes me, he just retired Bill...
Baker?
Baker.
Yes, Mr. Baker. We had a homeowner come to us and proposed a fairly massive structure in our backyard. I believe it was Mr. Palakis, if I'm not mistaken. And his structure was way beyond the limits of the 1%, and it was bigger than 192 square feet. And this phrase has stuck in my brain ever since because I know I'm going to use it myself for my son when he applies for an accessory structure, that the structure that the applicant at that time applied for and the size variance well in excess of the Village Code was insignificant. And I said, "Boom." So anybody who comes before a planning and/or zoning board can cite precedents and say, "Technically, the precedents have already been set that these sizes are arbitrary and can be considered insignificant," which puts then the owners back on the boards to really consider, "Are these size limitations as they exist right now relevant to today?"
So the only thing I would ask you is, when does it become unreasonable? At what size? At how many square feet? At 1%? At 2%? At property size? On house size?
That is in debate for another day.
Well, somebody's gonna have to have that if they're gonna discuss about changing that.
The law has, the verbiage needs to be generated to say, "This size is the minimum" and/or "This is the maximum." But we have not got there. We have what we have to get.
We have what we have, which is 1% or 132 or 130.
1% or 192 max, whichever is less. But we also have precedent that says if they apply for a variance for sizing, that we have already said, if you read through, if you go back through the history, you can find the meeting minutes that said the size variance was technically, he considered insignificant, and the board approved the structure because it is built. I'm just saying, this is what I recall. I don't remember the specifics.
So even the Supreme Court says with precedent, we will get rid of the precedent and change the rules. So I mean, just because it's precedent doesn't mean that you continue doing that. I mean, we've had examples of that from the Supreme Court that have changed precedent. So that doesn't...
I'm just saying what I believe is happening.
What I'm saying is that it's different. You're talking apples and oranges for one thing when you start talking about US Supreme Court case precedents, it's a little different. A zoning ordinance, the reason there's a zoning board of appeals is because it was contemplated when zoning ordinances were first put into place that there's gonna be exceptions. And if you can meet the criteria for a variance, then, you know, you can get the variance. So precedent, each application for a variance should be considered on its own merits. Precedent only applies if in the immediate neighborhood there's other sheds that are 192 square feet. Now that would be something that's relevant or great in their neighborhood. But I don't know if anybody's taken the time to do that research to see if that's the case. But because, you know, the main thing, you don't want to change the character of the neighborhood. But there's already a lot of 192 square foot sheds in people's backyards in that part of Lincolnshire or that neighborhood.
Those are very narrow lots.
That's a factor you should consider. And I'm just, you know, talking about, in the town of Webster, it's 25% of the square foot of the main building or 2% of the lot size, whichever is larger. In no case show the accessory structure exceed 2,500 square feet. Now, of course, in the town, there's much larger lots than in the village. But still, even in our three zones, you know, like in West Webster where the houses were built in the middle 50s, you know, off of Dewitt Road, it's 2%, not 1% like it is here in the village.
And honestly, I've been in the village for 25 years. Mr. Kryvik actually was my son's Boy Scout leader. I don't know if you remember Joe. I don't want to change the character of the village. I love the village. I raised two children here. This was a mere mistake, taking into information that we were given and told was okay. If we had known from the beginning, it was 130.
Can I just stop you there? You said that before. Who told you it was okay? A village representative or the...
No, the person when we bought and then when we applied for the permit, it was a week later that I got a phone call saying the shed was too big after we applied for the permit.
Okay, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
But I have no interest in changing the character of the village. You won't even really be able to see the shed from the road. You'll see it from one small corner of the, I had a pool back there that nobody knew we had. It is a very secluded lot compared to, it doesn't back up grass to grass with the house behind us. I gladly, if I would've known that this was the drama that was gonna be caused, would've surely stayed in the limit for the village. We're just trying to get a variance for something that's already been purchased, bought, paid for, and permitted for. Without changing the character, I love the village of Webster. Like I said, I've been here for 25 years and raised two children through the school system. And I'm not one of these people moving to Webster and saying, "Okay, let's cut down all the trees and put up five sheds," and I too enjoy the character of the village.
Okay, other comments or thoughts from...
I applaud the idea of getting together and talking about this. I think that it's long, it seems to be long overdue. And that I don't think that everybody's opinion of having large sheds is the same. I don't believe that everybody...
But we just reviewed this like a year now.
Exactly, that's my point.
Well, originally, the code was 100 square feet.
I wear that.
I have a 100 square foot shed. I don't have enough space to put all my stuff in a 100-foot square foot shed. Now, I have 3/4 of an acre in the village, so I could probably get 192 square foot, no problem.
And still would be enough storage.
And it still wouldn't be enough storage. So somewhere, we had to start from going from going a variance over every 100 square feet to at least applying some type of thought to the size of the lot? So that we could say, "Hey, well, if it's 1%, you should be allowed 160 square feet." So there's a thought of that. Now maybe we need to revamp it to 2%? I don't know. But we just did review this because I think this board was tired of looking at everything over 100 square feet, which is everything.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with anything you're saying. That's my point. I'm saying, then let's do that.
Well, but I don't wanna, I guess I'm tired of rehashing this, so... I think at one point, we just gotta stick with it and say, "Alright, we're gonna have to do these variances."
So if what Mr. Thompson is saying in the sense of coming down the line, we're going to be doing that? So do you want to just immediately have everybody rubber stamp it? Or what do we want to do about that?
No, I want to take each property that's coming into it and take a look at it and evaluate it and take it from what it is.
Okay, so the properties around this Nine Lincolnshire, there's no, I don't think there's any sheds that are that big?
I don't think that's, and I'll take him just a little bit further. And the only thing I'm trying to do is keep the argument of the discussion going where it is, is I don't think he's making that part of the discussion. I think what he's discussing right now is how do you evaluate this particular individual request for variance on this particular property or not?
Right.
Zayn?
This application has to be...
Right. I mean, there's nothing that stops anyone from coming to this board with an application for a variance to anything that exists right now in the board. And this exists in the book.
I'm not disagreeing with that at all.
Okay.
I truly, I totally agree with that.
Alright.
I agree with the process. What I'm saying is that you're gonna keep having, you're gonna have the lines lined up. Unless you look at this thing from a different point of view, it sounds to me.
But I think the lines were doubled when it was just 100 square feet.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm not saying that the new code is incorrect or not good, or it doesn't seem to be good enough.
Well, and that's a fair statement. And I think that's, and you tell me, Mike, could we do the same thing here? Could we have another meeting with the group to begin to talk about that? That's one issue.
Oh, yeah.
Now, with the issue that's at our doorstep right now, there's been a valid request for a variance to build something that they brought plans to us on. And I will, I don't have the plans, but I know that they exist for 190...
192 square feet?
Correct.
12 by 16.
12 by 16.
If I may, I'm gonna give you a picture of what you're talking about. I heard a couple of you say, "This is a significant request." This is, I'm gonna give my opinion, this is not a significant request. The table you're sitting at right here is the extra size that they're basically talking about. That's not significant.
What was that, one more time?
The size of this table, basically, is the extra space that they're requesting. If you think that's significant, I don't even know what I'm just saying. I'll be honest with you. That's literally the size you're talking, the extra space that whoever said it was significant.
That's fair, but that doesn't stop us from having that open discussion with some other folks about whether or not 130 square feet or 1% is appropriate or 192 square feet is appropriate.
And this is, if you guys remember me telling you there's several code changes coming down the line that we want input on, this is one of them. So this is a long discussion of what you're saying, which I appreciate.
Well, so Mr. White brought up about the town of Webster and having 2,500 square feet. Well, the town of Webster does have large lots.
Right.
There's a subdivision that has clustered subdivision that's basically smaller than the village lot. Are they still allowed 2,500 square feet? That would be my question.
It's phrased sort of the same thing.
That's the ultimate max.
Ultimate max.
But it's basically 25% of the square foot of the main building or 2% of the lot size.
So when I look at stuff, I do look at all 30 towns, see kind of what they're doing. And clustered lots are pretty small. So... And it's no fault of anybody to hear that lots are the way they are from, you know, back in the day.
So understood, and taking into consideration all the comments and the appropriate statements that were made. We still have on our plate a request to build a 100... Build, to bring me in. I don't know if they're gonna build it, are we? We're just gonna bring it in?
We have seen a picture, if you want to see a picture.
Yeah, I crushed you on that one. So they're gonna bring it in, let's say they bring it in, they're gonna put it in the backyard. That's what's on our plate right here. Fair enough.
My son wants one.
So 9 and 1/2 feet is up to this peak?
Correct.
And then it'll match the siding on the house?
Yeah, and we do have a height requirement. I'd actually, I had no concern for it because we do have a height requirement. So if it was higher than what the lot, I wouldn't have had to do it. Okay.
Usually part of our packet of information is a scheduled building or at least a memory facility and/or a picture of divying it from somebody. So that does help.
Thank you, White.
So what you gotta do is, I see several of you have your codebooks, is you gotta look at 175-76D. And it sets forth the five factors that you are to consider when you look at an area variance. You don't just do this off the top of your head. You know, in fact, you're supposed to make findings for each one. The first one is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created. The second one is the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The next one is the requested area variance is substantial. The next is the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And then lastly, the alleged difficulty was self-created. Whether or not the alleged difficulty was self-created. So those are the five things you're supposed to consider.
And what does that mean? If any one of those are met, that's potential?
Well, so it's a balancing act.
Okay.
You go through the five of them and it doesn't say that you have to have a, you know, that all five of them have to be in favor of a variance or against a variance, but it's...
You just have to consider them.
Right, you just need enough people against them than for them. Then you don't go anywhere. You end up with three out of the five being, you know, being, you know, not to grant the variance, you probably shouldn't grant it. But if, in fact, the self-created hardship one specifically says that that shall not necessarily preclude the granting of area variance.
Where was it?
175-76D.
76, thank you. 76, thank you.
Hit it, Beth. About two thirds of the way down the table.
Got it. Powers and duties. All right, so right now, we've had some discussion. Did you have anything else to add, by the way? You can add everything that you want here.
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we've still got a, something on our plate to either grant the individual variance for this individual one. And by the way, that doesn't mean that we will have a list that comes up before us and everything else must be on that list that gets approved. That doesn't mean that, at least not in my mind. But it does have a few things that, that we can go through. So I'm going to recommend that we do that and then come to a decision. Anybody got a page?
It's 175:106.
106, there you go. All right. 103, 105, here we go. All right, so to build a shed in the backyard away from the corners of the lot, so it's not encroaching on that in any way, shape, or form.
10 feet setback.
10 feet setback, thank you, better way to put it. So variances, to grant variances from the area dimensional requirements of this chapter and making the determination, this only Board of Appeals shall consider the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. In making such a determination, the Board shall consider whether, all right, an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting. Anybody think so?
Negative.
No? I don't.
There's nobody voicing violent, just, just report that.
Anyone?
I said no.
Okay. All right. Second one is, the benefits sought by the applicant can achieve, can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance.
Well, yes, the simple answer is yes, but it costs. There's a cost of the fact relationship. I mean, to build a 192-foot structure as an addition onto the house would be a much more onerous task than buying a pre-built shed and placing it on the lot.
I agree with that.
Comments? Agree?
Agreed.
Larry?
I'm an employee member now.
Okay. All right. Third one, the request, the requested area variance is substantial.
I'd say no.
There's two parts to this. Is it substantial? And if so, does that matter in this particular case? What I heard was it is not substantial?
I think it is.
You think it is? Possible that it is, but does it?
How much it takes up on their property? The footprint on their property.
Okay.
I don't think it's substantial.
Insignificant.
Insignificant, fair enough. But we've got some open comments on that, and I think that's great. All right, the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district.
I would say no.
I say no. No.
I would have said no also.
Unless, of course, you're building some hideous thing.
Based on the picture.
If that goes down over here and he's actually put the requirements to the height of it. Correct. All right. And the fifth one is the, the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. Everybody understand that? Thoughts on that?
Well, the obvious answer is always yes, this is a self-created problem. But this is a, this is a life issue. I mean, all our homes are bigger.
It's only self-created to the extent that they already bought the shed.
Right.
Because I believe they said if they had known that that size wasn't allowed, they would have got a smaller one.
Absolutely.
But they already bought it, so. So it's only self-created because of that. And you got to take them at face value, that the salesperson or whatever said, oh, 192 is allowed in the building.
They, yeah, they didn't do their homework.
Right.
But wasn't self-created? And I would have almost said no, it wasn't self-created because they didn't know that at the time.
Well, right, but the reason they wanted the shed was because they got a lawnmower, they got a snow blower, and so.
It means more space.
So if he gets, he sells all that stuff and buys a shovel and a pair of scissors, then he wouldn't need the shed.
Yeah, but that, I don't think that's really, that's not really what self-created means. Because you could claim that, you know, you have a house because you need a roof over your head. Is that self-created? You know, just you're building a house? Not, it's, you know.
All right, in taking into consideration everything that's been discussed or talked or asked right here, it says, the Board of Appeals in the granting of area variances shall grant the minimum variance that it shall deem necessary and adequate at the same time to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. That's just something to put inside your.
That's the balancing test I was talking about.
Yep.
That you got to balance the benefit to the applicant versus any detriment to the neighborhood.
So right now, as we've gone through that.
So before, if you're looking for a motion on the variance, before you do that, you got to take care of seeker. And an area variance by definition is a type 2 action, so it's.
Fair, fair enough on the statements.
So we don't have Phil Baker, who was our seeker, with us.
Mark, can you open for public comment?
Rick Walder, 20 Elm Street. A few years ago, I built a new garage and went through some variances here because of, zoning does not fit my neighborhood. It was zoned, my neighborhood is old and the zoning doesn't fit, so I had to get a variance. I built a new garage for more storage. I built, as big as the village was without the variance I built, the variance I got was for the side yard setback. With a brand-new garage, I still have the shed in my backyard that I had before, and I do rent some off-site storage space. I see no detriment to the neighborhood with the garage or the shed they're talking about. And I know very well how much space we all need in this day and age. I would say this should go through. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the comments. All right. So in granting a seeker status to it, does anyone have that? Not to build up with this any longer?
You just, you just need someone to make, make a motion that it's a type 2 action and by definition, there's no significant environmental impact for this variance.
I will make that motion, that this is a type 2 seeker action with no, no environmental impact.
Okay, we have that motion on the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Nobody opposed. Would grant it that. Now let's go back to the variance here. The variance that's being requested, as I understand it, and I'll put it in my own words and my own thought process, is 62 square feet, because 130 feet would be, would be requested. 62 additional square feet would take it to 192 feet in addition to all the building requirements that, that you're going to put there with that and anything that's built. So what I need is a motion to either grant it, or there can be a motion placed on the table to not grant it, as it's out there for 62 feet away from the property line.
Well, I would like to make a motion for the acceptance of, or the approval of a 62-square-foot area variance for the size of the structure, with the condition that it is 10 feet setbacks from side and back lots.
All right, we've got that motion on the table.
For a full 192-square-foot structure.
For a 192-square-foot structure, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No one would be opposed. Good luck with this thing. And thank you for putting, putting us through this, but.
Well, you're welcome.
All right, good luck with it. Were you sweating?
Big and hurt, were you sweating?
Well, yeah, sure started.
No.
I mean, we did, we truly didn't do it on this thing.
All right.
But thank you.
I think we need to discuss eventually, the percentage coverage. If we have 1.5% of that brings us to 195 square feet, boom, this thing goes away. 12 by 16 maximum.
Thank you.
I'd like to know what's coming our way, what we think is, is being discussed right now, and how we can, how we can add something to that.
Right. Just want to change in the code. Right? All the code?
We can, we can put, we can put the comments in front of the. No. All right. Do we have a meeting for next month?
Thank you. Yes.
We have another meeting for this month, providing we have a forum. August 18th. There's two applications, which Aaron has packets to give you for both. But first of all, we need to make sure we're going to have a forum then.
Thank you.
Thursday, August 18th.
I won't be here on the 18th. I will not either, but these are, I'm going to say simple applications. I don't like to use that term after a few things.
Well, before we, before you go further with that, Aaron, another alternative to that is if we want to look at Tuesday, the 23rd of August. Our normal meeting night would have been August 18th, a Thursday.
Yep.
But we know Don and Aaron won't be here then.
I can do the 18th, I can't do the 23rd.
Okay.
Either or works for me. Tuesdays, Thursdays, no issue.
Mike?
Yeah, I can do either one.
I can do either one.
Okay, so Kathy's the only one that can't do the 23rd. Does the 23rd work for both of you?
Yeah, the 23rd's fine with me.
The Tuesday?
We want the other two at the.
Peter and Larry were good, Kathy was the only one that couldn't do the 23rd.
I'm good for the 18th.
I'm good for the 18th.
Not the 23rd?
Don't know where the conversation's going. What's that supposed to mean?
Would you, would you all like to know what they're for?
Yeah.
Yeah, what are they for? One is for a shed for sides, for side setbacks. They want five feet versus 10 feet. But I don't want to discuss that right now.
They want, they want a setback variance, but no side variance?
We just want to discuss it then.
That's, that's neighbor issue.
Yeah, no. And that was a weird shape, whatever. But anyway, the other one is for a driveway. He wants to just basically extend his driveway from what's allowed.
To make it wider?
To make it wider, yeah.
And, and just curious, is he going to take it down the side of his garage so he can park three cars?
His car is, his driveway's already double-wide. He just wants to bring it all the way to the street. He can bring it almost all the way down to the street except for 20 feet. We have stopped that a couple of times. I'm just letting you know what's been brought. And I'll hand out the packets to you all. So then I don't have to deal with them. Let's come back to the second one.
So that's that. Save me a lot of time with a.
All right, so these things are both on the agenda for us for the 18th.
18th or 23rd, whichever.
You're not available the 23rd?
23rd.
You available?
18th.
Not available the 23rd?
Correct.
I'm good.
I was good on the 23rd or the 18th.
I'm fine either way.
So it's up to you. The 18th is fine, we just know Don and Aaron won't be here.
We know that they will at that point. Larry, are you available?
I, I'm sure I'm available.
Okay.
Not you.
Don and Aaron, you're both not going to be available on the 18th? I think you should make it the 23rd.
I'm out of town.
So am I.
On a vacation.
So am I.
So do you want to come on the 23rd? Is the question.
I can do the 23rd, that's not a problem. It's like, it's up, as long as you go through that 176, 175, 76 feet, and the five things, you know, you should be okay. Tuesdays are better for me anyway, if you know what I'm saying.
All right, let's have a conversation. But I don't think we're going to come to a decision here right now.
Well, the notice had to be in the paper this week.
Well, we are going to come to a decision. And just so you know, there is also going to be one out for September, because I've already got a, a application for September as well.
Another shed?
Nope. That's for front setback porch.
All right, let's move it to the 23rd and leave it that way.
Okay, so food for thought, if you see it in the Herald for the 18th, you can ignore it. I can put it in as a correction next week, and for the 23rd, we'll still be fine.
All right. So both Peter and Kathy won't be here on the 23rd?
Yeah, I'm out of town on the 23rd.
But Larry will.
So that's still, instead of five people, you're at four.
We are at four, that is correct.
That is a detriment to the applicants.
But it's better than.
I have to be in my kitchen.
The alternative is the 18th, if you guys are not here.
But we don't vote, so.
We don't vote. I can give you guys my opinion, it's just that it's, yeah.
Or you'd be pushing back a month or.
I don't think that's fair to the applicants.
All right, Joe, isn't there another?
Joe, isn't there another alternative?
No. When Bill retired, we haven't added on another alternative yet.
Another alternative? Second alternative?
No, since, as Joe just said, when Bill retired, the, Bill's board didn't replace the second alternative. Because it was Peter and Larry. And Peter's now the regular member, so we only want one.
How do you guys feel about the 18th? No, not you guys, you two.
I'm fine.
I can do it. Sorry, my name. In the past, you've always given the people the opportunity to go to the next meeting because you already have four people you explain to that they don't have to be hurried that day. I mean, they, you know, the odds are better with five.
If you guys do the 18th, you're gonna have your five or six, you just won't have a lot.
Oh, that's kind of where I am.
I can give you my opinion and my recommendations.
And you just gotta remember, take care of seeker.
Yeah.
And they're both type-two because they're area variances, so it's not that big of a difference. But you gotta put it on in the minutes that you consider seeker.
Right.
And then go through those five vectors for each one.
Well, and that also, the problem with you guys not being here is that it will probably come up that we have denied that variance already when it's come before this board to take the driveway out to the street at the extra length.
I mean, if you're on my opinion now, I'll give it, but I don't think ten.
Yeah, you can.
Oh, sure.
It's still, it's still an open meeting. The public can be here and there's, you know.
So this is also on my head list for changing the code. This isn't definition only, this isn't even a specific code. It's only by definition only. So myself, Jake, we don't agree with this at all for the, for the requirement.
You don't agree with the expanded widened driveway?
For the way it's written, and it being defined as, only being defined in the definition, not as an actual code. But we also don't agree if somebody wants to have, you know, my first one in it again, if somebody wants to have a double-wide driveway, but they've got two vehicles, that's extremely tough nowadays. I mean, how would any of you like to be jockeying cars around? Because then we also have a code saying you can't park in your lawn. So if they're half on their lawn, half aren't on, on the driveway, they're against code. So we have a lot of different.
But then I would say, so what are you expecting them to do? Put pavement all over where their lawn was? And expand it out?
No, there's parts that I agree with. Like I agree with, you know, not having it, you know, a certain distance from your, from your property line, stuff like that. But a double, a double driveway is, to be honest with you, standard.
So they have a.
A double is.
It's a single-car garage?
They have a, it's a single-car garage.
Well, that's the problem. Right.
But it's already double at the front, up at the garage, they can park right. Two.
They can park.
But it just narrows down to one exit, so there's one.
That's what, we've done that before.
Right, so they just wanna extend it.
If they had a two-car garage.
It would come straight out to the road.
Right.
Right, they wouldn't need a variance.
They wouldn't come to.
It's only because the garage is a single.
Right. And with the way part of it's written as well, is if you have the space to add on in the future, in other garage beds, you're allowed to have that extra driveway, which they do have the space.
But what it means.
That's if they would.
And they have the side setback.
Oh, yeah, they have, they have a ton of space on the garage, yeah. So then it's still, it's effective.
So from an aesthetic perspective, it's a rather.
It's gonna actually make it look better, because you can see where they're driving on their lawn, where it's turning into dirt and mud. So it's gonna make it look better, and all the neighbors all around them, they all have two-car.
Well, the other, the other thing would be is that somebody would have to have something done on the code with the individual who's parking on the front lawn. Because that's not allowed.
Well, no, they're not parking there, they're just driving through there to get to their other apartment driveway while the other car is parked there. So they're not parking there, you know what I mean? But all the other neighbors around, most of, they have double, double driveways. And some of them did get variances in the past, because I've already looked it up. So they did get them in the past. So it's my opinion that I would be extremely okay with that. The other one, it's setbacks. I don't wanna give my opinion. I'm fine with it, I mean, I'll say that part of it. Because it's a weird shape and everything else. But there's just some issues with the way the code's written right now, and if I keep on record, do that part of it. Off record, I will, but it's not on record. So when we shut our mic sound channel, then we'll, I can, we'll talk about that part, but after the meeting closes out.
All right, so we've got a meeting on the 18th. He's given us a little bit of an opinion on where they are, what they're dealing with. It's gonna be interesting.
And, I mean, also for the record, I'll be available by phone, so if you guys do wanna talk, I'll be more than happy to, to talk. I mean, I'm just not physically available, I'll be in Pennsylvania, so.
You gonna be hunting or hiking or?
I wish I was gonna be hunting. No, my, my daughters are just, I'm taking them on some trips to see different people first.
All right. Okay. Uh, is there anything else? Any more to say? All right, so we've got a meeting coming up on the 18th. We've established everybody's presence at that meeting, we've talked about what's coming up again. Anyone have anything else to do, or we can call for a meeting to be ended?
Make a motion to end the meeting.
We've got a motion to end the meeting, all in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll see y'all on the 18th.